Those, you know, probably a couple of months, ready for that, doesn't matter.
Let's wait, let's just. Yeah, let's wait and we'll just take care of what we have to at our special meeting. Because all of the board won't be there. I don't want them to miss anything. So we'll just take care of the vouchers at the next meeting and then the following, after that, we can take care of your report.
That'll be great. So I'll plan on that in January, having hopefully like three months worth of financials for us. That's really all that I have to report on tonight.
Any questions from the board for Mr. Reynolds? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll move on now to Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction Flores. And she's going to transition from her report into the school improvement plans for us. If somebody has a microphone on in the background, could you turn it off in somebody's TV or something? We're going to transition from Deanna into the principals as they start their reports on their school improvement plans. So go ahead, Deanna.
Deanna, I'll put that up for you right now. Hold on one sec.
Okay.
While she does that.
I'm going to go ahead and.
Does that, let me just. Real quick, let me remind the principals, we're going to try to limit the time, otherwise we'll be here for a couple of hours. If we can keep the reports around 10 minutes or so or less, and then we'll ask them to remember if they have any questions, we'll move through them.
I think they'll be prepared for that, Scotty. We planned on making sure we were to the point. And my report, I'm going to dedicate my time to the school improvement plans and school improvement and school plans. This year, we've done something different than than ever before in aligning our school improvement plans. In in an attempt to have long-term goals, the state not only and Title I. Want is really want to see plans that aren't just a one-year goal and move on, but something that you're working on long-term. Because most improvement doesn't happen in just one year. So our plans this year, our elementary plans are all the goals are identical. And that will be Keene, Riverview, Prosser Heights, and Witstrand. And our high school and middle school plan, they also work together, but theirs are a little bit different because they have some different academic measures and then the high school has some additional goals. So we're going to start right now with the elementary. We do have five-year goals written. Go ahead and go to that next slide, Deidre. Normally, we would break down these five-year goals into yearly increments, but this is not a normal year. So this year, our focus really is overall, our goal is to maintain grade level status for students so they don't regress. They continue to move forward. This this situation with distance learning and the shutdown of the pandemic. We're going to, we're monitoring our students' growth really carefully, but we are going to use those five-year goals. So in in the next four years, we'll be dividing our growth over four years. And this year, like I said, our goal is to, students to at least improve. So if they they finished at third grade level last year, we're hoping they're going to finish at the end of fourth grade this year. And these are some of the things that we're going to be working on. So we're going to start with our reading goals.
Oops. Do you see me now? Okay, so I'm Chris Moore, the principal of Keene Riverview, and I'm presenting for all the K or the K-5 elementary schools for reading. So as Deanna shared, this is a very different approach than what you've heard of in the past. But one positive opportunity that comes out of this COVID epidemic is the collaboration of K-5. It's the strongest it's ever been in the district. Starting last March, the principals and the coaches had our staffs work in grade-level bands regardless of what school they went to. So that kids had common instruction in their grade-level standards. Singular grade band focus is continuing this year, especially when we're working around professional development. Our coaches PLC time and also on on our online programs that we're using at each of our schools. So it makes sense to continue the systematic focus when we're working on our symbols. So in the reading goal, the reading goal is, as it states there, seventy-five percent of all third graders will read at grade level by the spring of 2025. As measured by the iReady scores. So first of all, I want to explain a little bit about iReady assessment in reading. It is an assessment that's given three times a year in our district. It measures or assesses and measures kids in six component areas. The component errors are phonological awareness, which is being able to hear the sounds in a word. Like apple, I hear two sounds. Phonics, which is hearing the small units of sound, which are the letters such as cat. I hear three different sounds for three different letters. They're able to have be measured in high-frequency words, vocabulary, and then comprehension in both informational and in literature. This is not the only assessment that we give in school. We also give formative assessments throughout the school year. We give DRA, which this year we have just, we've been using RAS+ and then using it, correlating it to the DRA. We give FOTISPLINEL in between the blocks of time that we give iReady to be able to monitor student growth. The last complete year that we had students take the iReady test was fall of last year. In fall of 2019, all K-5 students took the iReady reading test, K-5. In that year, 213 students out of 1,138, which is nineteen percent of our students were on grade level at the beginning of the year in reading. Now, they grow during the year. In a normal year, they grow, but at the beginning of last year, only nineteen percent were on grade level. Now, by the end of the year, that's much higher. The accuracy of this year's virtual data is kind of questionable. Number one, because students not all took the test and also the amount of support they're given at home when given the test. But this year, out of eight hundred and seven students that took the test K-5, 223 of them, which is twenty-seven percent, were on or above grade level. So remembering the focus in K-2 is learning how to read. And in three-five, reading to learn, the areas of greatest need are being reflected as we focus on the priority standards. So for instance, on first grade, with the absence of a complete year, our kinder, our first grade students are really struggling in phonemic awareness and phonics. Seventy percent of them are not at grade level in first grade this year. So we are focusing on the priority standards around those foundational skills in our class medians and small group work. In third through fifth grade, vocabulary is a huge weakness this year based on the iReady skills. Forty-nine percent of those students are below grade level, one to two grade levels below, which creates a huge challenge for them to be able to comprehend both in literature and in informational. So in order to address those, and that's also a, I, that also is reflected in our ELL population. It's very hard to read if you are reading and writing, if you don't have your speaking and listening first, if you have a very strong foundation in that. So the steps we're taking to achieve this goal in the next five years has already started. It's not a year that we haven't started this goal. On December 3rd, the K-5 met and we began the evaluation and determination if changes are needed to existing K-5 programs. So the first step was to gather all the information on what programs are the buildings using? What time, what are their instructional and intervention times look like? And what kind of assessments are used at every school? And we've compiled that list that we could share with you. The second piece of that is now starting, which is the evaluation of the existing programs. Now that we have the list, we're going to evaluate them for implementation and the effectiveness of it. For instance, one program, Words Their Way, is a program we use for phonological awareness and phonics. It's also one that's, one that's high-quality phonics program that the Dyslexia Foundation had on their list. But are we using it to the fullest that it's being able to use? And then the third activity or goal that we're going to use is designing, based on all this information that will be accumulated, designing a district-wide system to address the teaching of reading. What does core look like in K-5? What do the interventions systematically so that we can provide them when students are of need? That's the reading goal. Questions?
Board members, do you have any questions for Chris on the reading goal? All right. Thank you, Chris.
You're welcome.
All right. So I think we're going to move on to Jody next. Is that correct, Deanna?
Yep, yep, it is. All right. All right. Okay, so I've got the reading goal, and I just want to tell you that this has been really fun for me because I am a middle school ELA teacher for sixteen years. And so I'm learning math. So our goal is also seventy-five percent of all fifth graders will perform at the grade level in math by the spring of 2025. Measured by iReady. So at this point, when you're looking at the iReady data, um, as a district, what I was noticing is that we are, we really struggle with the geography or geometry and algebraic thinking. And so just with, when I was looking at heights and Witstrand, because of that three-five, we are at seventy percent, both schools are at seventy percent in geometry of of students not on grade level. And then with algebraic thinking, heights was still at seventy percent, not on grade level, and Witstrand was at sixty percent, in the sixty percent. So we have some work to do. What we are doing is that we are working with Will McCozy monthly. She's giving us three through five training and she's meeting with each grade level monthly and going through that. She's also meeting with, she's meeting K-5, but I, sorry, she's meeting K-5, focusing on my three-five. But we're also really digging into those priority standards. She's helping us dig into the priority standards and problem-solving routines and practices. And so the teachers themselves have really also looked at their pacing charts to make sure that throughout this year, we are hitting all of our priority standards. And I know for me, one of my colleagues that I have worked with, he really did focus on those priority standards and fractions in particular. And he taught third grade fractions in particular, and his kids at by the end of the year, for two years in a row, were scoring in the eighty percent percentile on the SBA because he was very purposeful in working on those priority standards. So I'm confident our scores can go up because of that. We also are still having all the pull-out programs for the math interventions and doing some small groups. So those are our big, our big things that we're working on. I just lost my train of thought there, but, so yeah, that that's where we're at. I know I'm missing something on my notes and I can't find them, but is there any questions? That was kind of nitty-gritty.
Okay. Board members, do you have any questions for Jody on our math schools? All right. Thank you, Jody. We'll move on to Kevin, English language learners.
Good evening. So before we start on the ELL goals, I just want to thank everybody for their work that they're putting into this. And I also want to say that it's very exciting to me to be working with the other two principals on common goals, common curriculum and professional development. Not only that, but using iReady, and I'm not saying iReady is perfect. I don't know of one single program that is perfect, but at least that we have data that we can start having conversations around different topics and concepts across the district and and across the three elementary. So that data has really driven these goals and the conversations that we're having. With the ELL students, seventy percent of them who qualify will exit EL services by the end of fifth grade in 2025. And actually, I believe that the ALPA test is going away and will be transitioning to WEDA this this year. Which is, which is we, one of the tests that WEDA recommends is the LOS test, and we've been using the LOS test with our bilingual students over the last two or three years. So we have a basic understanding of what that test is. And we'd be able to, I feel like we'll be able to at least administer it fairly easy. Our ELL goal is to implement regular vocabulary routines during instruction to support language acquisition. What we're finding though, as we we research this, is that vocabulary is not going to, and you heard from Chris that the domains in iReady, there are six domains with the phonological awareness, phonics, high-frequency words, vocabulary, comprehension, and literature and informational. So what we're, what we're finding, what research is telling us, is that the vocabulary, this focus on vocabulary is not only going to help our ELL students, it's going to help all students. Some of the data that supports us in 2018, 19, we had a limited population actually doing iReady for in reading. Math had already started, but reading hadn't quite gone, implemented fully across all of the, all the buildings. Vocabulary was the lowest domain on the iReady diagnostic that year. Sixty-nine percent of students were below grade level. In the fall of 2019 to 2020, vocabulary was the lowest domain at two elementary schools and the second lowest at the at the third elementary school. And that, in the fall, there were seventy-seven percent of students were below grade level. Winter of 2019, 2020, vocabulary was the lowest domain at all three elementary schools and seventy-seven percent of the students were below grade level. This last fall, like Chris had mentioned, some of the results have been altered, well, I wouldn't say altered, but inconsistent, because we don't know how much support students, especially the younger students, receive from parents at home. But vocabulary was the lowest domain at two elementary schools and tied for second lowest at the third elementary school. Currently, seventy-one percent of students are well, are below grade level or well below grade level. Some quotes about around the vocabulary and the research that we're doing. And this, these quotes were provided by Jennifer Calgill, who is doing our PD, which I'll get to in a second. It is difficult, if not impossible, to separate vocabulary and comprehension. And this comes from the National Reading Panel, 2000. Vocabulary knowledge directly relates to reading comprehension. Another quote, kindergarten students' word knowledge predicts reading comprehension in second grade and again in fourth grade. First, first grade students' vocabulary predicts their reading comprehension in the eleventh grade. And that was reported in Blended Vocabulary. The last quote here, a large oral vocabulary helps children as they begin learning to read. Students with larger vocabularies tend to become better readers, enjoy reading more, and read independently with more frequency than students with smaller vocabulary, who struggle as readers and dislike reading. And that also comes from blended vocabulary. And that's what we're kind of seeing through the research is that vocabulary is is directly tied to the comprehension. And that's part of the reason why we're focused on vocabulary. We feel that if we have better vocabulary routines, better understanding of tier one, tier two, and tier three vocabulary words, and better ways to implement those vocabulary words, it will eventually increase comprehension. Like I said before, we've been working with Jennifer Calgill. She had her first, we're meeting with her five times this year, four times this year, sorry. We just had her in December. We'll have her again January 22nd and then February 19th. She's going to be focused, she focused on vocabulary routines this, the last PD. She'll be focused on, focusing on vocabulary routines again in January. And then we'll be switching to language function compare and contrast in February. During that training, the three questions that were asked and then discussed were which words do we pick, when do we teach them, and how do we teach them? And so through that PD, teachers learn different routines. And more importantly, academic language and how the tiers, how words, vocabulary words fall into different tiers. So tier one being conversational, tier three being more content-specific. So maybe vocabulary specific to chemistry. And then tier two words are the words that you're going to see, students are more likely to see in text. And to to content, but also in text in general. And so it's these these large tier-two words that we're kind of trying to focus on with some of those vocabulary routines. The two routines that were presented, the first one, Seven Steps of Preteaching Vocabulary by Dr. Margarita Calderon. It's an easy way to implement vocabulary on a consistent basis. The teacher seemed to be very excited about it. It's something that they can implement immediately. The second one is Marzano's Six Steps to Effective Vocabulary Instruction. This one's a little bit more deeper. This is when you take vocabulary words for a whole unit. And you might have six or 10 of those and you go, you basically study those words and dig deeper into those vocabulary words. We're also continuing our work with Karen Beeman with the Bilinguality Work. She just presented Digging Deeper Into the Bridge. If you remember, a couple of years ago, we presented the maps to you. Just to update you a little bit on that, we're moving from the maps to creating units of study. The bridge is a major portion of of those units. It includes three parts, some analysis, and then also a contrast analysis and some transition. And the whole point of the bridge is that it's intentionally planned and you're studying one language. Say, for example, our kindergarteners are are really immersed in Spanish and they're comparing it and contrasting it to English. And the goal is really to transfer from one language to another. And that's all I have for vocabulary. Any questions?
Kevin, well, just so I understand, you're talking about, all of you kind of talked about collaboration, K-5. So the word list that you're talking about that you worked with with Jennifer, that's a K-5 word list then, that you guys are trying to come up with?
Yeah, and we actually haven't identified the word list per per unit yet. This was the initial training. And so the training was getting people familiar or teachers familiar and staff familiar with tier one, tier two, and tier three words. And the defining of those and then examples of of words that would fit in those different tiers.
Board members, any questions for Mr. Gilmour? Okay, thanks, sir.
Next slide.
So, Deanna, we move on to. Okay.
Next is middle school. And Michael will be presenting, and Michael and Brian are kind of doing a little bit of a dog and pony show. We, I did find one error in the ELL slide that Michael will correct. I sent it the corrected version for Deidre, but it was easier for her to use this one, so he'll correct it when we get to it. So I think we're starting right now with Michael.
And I believe Scotty was talking directly to me, so I will try to keep it short tonight, Scotty, so. Ours, we broke them up, so I'll be discussing the reading goal in our ELL goal, as Deanna indicated. We've done the same as the as the elementary and the secondary level by creating a five-year goal. For the middle school and the area of reading, we've set a goal of seventy-five percent of all eighth-grade students will read at standard by the spring of 2025, as measured by the Smarter Balance Assessment interim blocks. We've used the iReady assessment as well. We've been looking at the assessment or the Smarter Balance Assessment through the interim blocks. It's a little more targeted to the specific areas that we're working on. Maybe it's a unit, we can look at the unit as a pre and a post-assessment. Measure growth that way at a much smaller level than just the three times a year. Much like the elementary, we did do the iReady assessment this year. And we did, the last one we did was last winter, just before Christmas break. And so we didn't finish out the end of the year assessment and then this fall, much like what I believe Chris talked about. We had a mix of success of getting that completed on time before the window closed. And and there's also a couple of indicators in there, whether a student rushed or or maybe skipped around. So the the results were limited to be able to look at it for this year. So we've started talking about looking at the Smarter Balance Assessment interim blocks, just to be more focused and more targeted. And working on questions and situations much more like the students will see at the end of the year, comprehensive, smarter balance assessment. So our reading goals, the activities that we've set for those for this year. At the middle school, we've been working on new English Language Arts instructional units. We implemented those just before school started. They were created by Will McCozy, and she's been leading the PD in that area. We've been implementing those in the sixth, the seventh, and the eighth grades. There's, that's for both reading and writing. And so we've just completed the first full set of units. We're working on the second set and the first set were pretty similar across the grade levels. So we had a lot of great collaboration between the grade levels, and now it's kind of split out a little bit in the work that they're doing. So a little bit more grade, grade-specific work. In order to move over to the Smarter Balance Assessment interim blocks, we're going to have to do some professional development, the administration and scoring of those blocks. How to use the data to inform our instruction. And that will be part of number three, where we we look at the PLC work, look at student work to inform instruction. And so that will be the formative assessments through the classroom. That will be the interim assessment blocks. It will be the data that we get from iReady. And the summative unit assessments that are common across all of our our classes. That's one thing our teachers have really been working on this year is creating those common assessments. So you may not leave one room and hear a teacher start a sentence and walk into another room and hear the other teacher finish that sentence. But their alignment and the work that they're doing is is much more aligned than it's ever been. So they're able to look at student data on a regular basis. That high school's goal is eighty percent eleventh graders will achieve the high school graduation cut score in ELA, English Language Arts by the spring of 2025 on the Smarter Balanced Assessment. And so a little bit different, they're looking at that graduation cut score on their eleventh graders. And so the activities, you'll see there, there are some of them that are highlighted. Those are where we're paralleling our work between the middle school and the high school. So they too will work on professional development and Smarter Balance Assessment interim blocks and the PLC work. And then they'll continue to use their work to revise the curriculum they have to make sure they're hitting those priority standards. And and those are the standards that, you know, there's, there's always maybe more that we hit in a year that, you know, helps provide a nice, well-rounded education for our students. But maybe there's a few things that that, you know, we can get away with not hitting this year because we'll circle back to it next year. So I'm working on those priority standards to make sure we're getting the information and the materials that are absolutely critical to have each year the building blocks for the following year. So when you look at it, those, those two goals, one for the middle school and one for the high school and the activities that are behind those, that is our reading work for this year. And it's, we've got a a big bite to work on this year. There's, you know, that's going from forty-one point three percent and sixty-seven percent for the middle school and the high school respectively to our goal in in five years, a challenge, but we're we're looking forward to that challenge.
I could have a question for you, the, it's the high school graduation cut score, the second block there. Is that a new standard that we're, are we moving the goal there to a different standard? Brian or Michael? We've been using this.
I can speak to that one. So when you see scores reported to the the OSPI report, those scores are based on the high school graduation cut score, which change year to year. So when we're evaluating students, you're not evaluating students on the same standard every single year. It depends on how many students score proficient. And that that cut score changes depending on on how well the kids are doing in that particular year. So that's one of the reasons why we wanted to go with that, because it is being reported. And you'll see the same thing with reading and with math. Because those are scores that are representative of our school on the on the school's report card, we wanted to use the same language. And and that's why we chose to go with that one. So it is not new, it's just how we're referencing it. I wanted to put the same language into it this year so that we were referencing the same thing that OSPI is referencing on the report card.
Perfect, thank you. Any questions for Michael before we move on to Brian from the board? All right, thank you, Michael. Brian, I think you're next.
Yeah, and I I already started to reference this many, almost all of the principals, I I hope, have given you a picture of what's happening administratively across the district. We are all very excited about the amount of collaboration that is taking place between buildings and not just horizontally. You know, the elementary schools have the opportunity to work with the same grade level in horizontal alignment. Michael and I, as well as the elementary schools, have the opportunity to work in a vertical alignment, which I hope you can see, and I hope is apparent in the language that we're using, such as math practices, such as priority standards. We are, I don't want to to take away. We are, I don't want to to take away from iReady in any way as I present this. But between Michael and I and the the secondary goals. In changing and moving away from iReady assessment, that doesn't mean that we're not using it this year. We're just looking at trying to use the same language that kids will be. Kids will be using and seeing on the smarter balanced assessment at the end of the year, which is what we're we're graded upon. And so that's one of the reasons that we're moving in this direction. We feel that the iReady assessment, though it provides us with valuable information. The platform itself is more geared toward elementary level students. And so that's why we're we're moving toward the interim block. But in terms of the math goals, you can see there the middle school has a goal of seventy percent of all eighth grade students will be at grade level. In math by the spring of two thousand twenty five. We're gonna have to break those down yearly within our buildings and in our action plans to try and and. Close this gap. You can see in two thousand eighteen nineteen, the middle school had a proficiency score of thirty seven, thirty four point three percent. So to go from thirty four point three percent to seventy percent. And then for the high school to go from thirty two point nine percent up to a seventy five percent. Is can seem a little bit daunting, so we're gonna have to really break that down and. And shoot for smaller, smaller scores and smaller incremental. Parts to to reach that standard by two thousand twenty five. And our math goals, again, they're similar to the ELA. You'll see the highlighted. Those are the areas that we share. Those are the commonalities. We have a little bit of a difference in math goals because we're using two different programs for math. Middle school uses illustrative math. And the high school uses Agile Minds. So for the middle school, numbers one and two on their activities are centered around that illustrative math piece. Number one, that the staff will use the curriculum adaptation packets or packs to address unfinished or missed missed learning. And number two, they'll use the section guides to mitigate issues around distance learning and pacing. And that said, that's the illustrative math language. That would match then the use of. The use of priority standards. And so when we talk about those things, we're talking about the same thing. We're just using middle school used illustrative math language. To communicate that in their plan. Again, we're focused on on priority standards. We're focused on our PLC work and taking that to the next level by. By reviewing student data and using that student data to inform our instruction at both levels. You have any questions on math?
I've heard it mentioned several times priority standards. Where where would we look to find what those priority standards are?
So we're at different phases of discussion in priority standards, but those priority standards have been identified through OSPI. So that is not a document that we're creating on our own. Those are already identified and are available on OSPI. That is information that we can we can get for you and we can, we probably should, having had that question. Probably should post that to our website. Or something similar. We're again, we're at the beginning stages of this and working on these priority standards, so we're all at at different stages. I should have said not beginning stages.
Achieve the core is also a very good website around standards and priority standards.
So I guess we'll pipe in here. Achieve the core went through the the standards and knew that in this. Model that of learning that the country's in, that there's no way that school districts could teach all of the standards in a particular grade level. So they went through and prioritize standards based on a few things. One, the standards that were really key for students to be successful in that grade and the next one. And then also some of the standards that maybe were just introductory standards in that grade. And were maybe taught more in depth in the following year were not were de-prioritized, but I can send you a link to that document.
Okay, I I would just be interested to know what and from from parents, I'm sure they want to know what it is that their kid expected to. Meet, so I I like. We're using the word priority standards, but I'm not sure where we find that. To match up to what we're teaching.
And I just want to jump back. We are, all of the standards are important and our teachers are trying to teach all of the standards. But putting more of an emphasis on those priority standards and roughly. We're talking about a quarter to a third of the standards would fall in the priority standard list. That doesn't mean that we're only teaching a quarter to a third. That means that the focus would be on that on that section.
Sure, okay. Thank you. Any questions for Brian on the math goals from the board? All right, what's next?
Keep going, Deidre.
Okay, I'm back. It was the one you just passed there, Deidre. Yeah, the English learners, yep. So. We've created goals around our English Language Learners for this year as well. One of the changes is we set an actual percent for the goal. You'll see on there it says. English learners will grow one level in two of the four domains. And we've actually said that eighty percent of our English Language Learners will grow one level in two of the four domains and that's reading, writing. Speaking and listening. So we're looking for them to grow and into those four. Just kind of as an anecdotal story, you know, the the students have to reach a proficiency level. In a in all of the areas and and what we'll find is at the middle school and we're looking through those and I'm sure it's at the other levels as well. You know, they may be at the highest level of proficiency in two or three of the four, but they've got one area. So we're really looking at the. At the middle level and I'm sure at all other areas as well, other grade levels as well. It trying to tailor to those students and their needs, whether it be reading, writing, listening or speaking, so. Last year, we had five classes at the middle school for our English Language Learners. And we were using Avid Excel. We're using Avid Excel this year as well. But we did bring on a new curriculum this year. ELL achieve and so it it's targeting our students. Who are new to English and and picking up all those English language components and so. At the middle school, that is something that we have a class for, one class for our sixth, one class for our seventh and one class for our eighth graders. And then students that maybe have a little bit different need for their language, we still are using the Avid Excel curriculum. That we talked about last spring when we were looking at at the Avid program, so. We're really targeting, we have all of our students that qualify for bilingual program support services or receiving. Services in their class. And so really a little bit more of a target this year than last year and last year was more of a target than than the year before. Some of the data that when we look at it. The number of students that met that goal last year from the middle school. Our our seventh graders that are now our eighth graders, there's fifteen percent of our students that showed growth in in two of the four domains. The eighth graders that are now ninth graders, that jumps to forty nine percent. So we're going back, looking at the program, seeing what the the cause for that was. And then we looked ahead and the students that were at the high school that were tenth grade up to eleventh grade had an even higher. Percentage of students that were meeting that goal. Last year as well. So we've we've got a lot of strengths in the program, but we're continuing to develop that program. The ELL program with ELL achieve. The admin at the middle school and high school just finished half day training. One of a multi-part training on our end is administrators, how to support that. Our teachers at both of the buildings have received professional development on that, so. It's exciting to watch those programs take off and and really get implemented. In in addition, is. Mr. Gilman talked about a little bit ago, the work with Jennifer Cowgill. Dr. Cowgill. Has been working with us. We started that work last year and it was a two-part. Professional development last year, just before and after kind of that January timeframe and. We finished the first round and I believe the week that we closed schools down across the country was the where we're gonna start our second level of that, so. We'd already started working on content-specific language and vocabulary. And then this year, we kind of picked it up at a different level and we're working with the high school, so we have. Every other week, we have an hour professional development that Eric has worked with or Mr. Larez has worked with. Dr. Cowgill to set up and so both of our staff are receiving that professional development every other week. On Friday afternoons and it's well attended and and we're working on those same things that Kevin talked about. I I. I wish I would have been able to have just jumped off of of Kevin's and and said, you know, we're we're working on a lot of those same things. The vocabulary, the different levels and 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 when we look at our iReady scores. Just as as Kevin was talking about earlier, it's vocabulary and comprehension and we're seeing the comprehension scores. In informational text is where you're gonna see those higher vocabulary, higher level vocabulary words. And that's where our students struggle more. So really trying to cross that bridge in all content areas, provide vocabulary. The one thing that I I do want to jump into quick and I'm I'm trying to be mindful of the time is that the vocabulary doesn't just. Address and it isn't just for our English learners. This is for all of our students. And and when we look at all of our students, developing the vocabulary and the. Knowledge for all of our students to increase all of their comprehension is important. So the work we're doing while it's. It's, you know, the goal is here under English learners and 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 that's where our goal will be monitored around and and checked up on. It really benefits every one of our students in our in our building, so. You know, that's kind of a a great part is it generalizes very well to all of our students.
I have a question for you, Michael, and maybe some of the other principals can help answer it. Brian alluded to it, the the iReady. Test or their ready assessments. How representative are those of the smarter balance assessment and if they aren't, but I think what you were saying, Brian? What test are we using to do the assessments with that is more in line with the the SBA?
So I'll let the others talk here in a sec, but I'll just get my two cents in. The the iReady assessment is an adaptive assessment, so if a student misses one. At a certain level, it might drop back and it kind of finds that happy place where they're able to to find a certain level of success, ceilings and and. Basals is what they're looking for and then based off of that, it gives you a score. Whereas maybe the interim blocks don't, it doesn't adjust by grade level. It looks at the the standards that are being taught at that at that specific. Unit level or at that grade level and it gives you a reflection directly back on that grade level or those specific. Goals are more targeted and so for us, you know, we might get something that says a student is in seventh grade, but they're working at a third grade level. And areas where they can improve, whereas the smarter balanced interim blocks are more focused and those are and it's it's the same. Comes from the same bank of of ideas and and assessments that the smarter balanced comprehensive comes from. But it it allows us to look at those specific standards and really focus on those standards versus all at one time. So that for us, that's what we liked is the ability to look at those standards. That we're gonna be working on and get a pre and a post, if you will, for those specific standards and really target that work.
So the interim blocks is the replacement then for. I ready.
That that's what we're looking to be more specific about is using the interim blocks because you can really break it almost down to the unit level. And so for us, we're able to go into a unit and give a smarter or the interim blocks and then look at them after as almost a pre and a post to show growth. On those specific. Standards.
I can speak to Scotty to. I ready, I ready is our one assessment that is used across really K ten, but we also use it for some eleventh graders. And being a title in LAPD district, we're required to use a measure to report growth. And we could, there's different choices. They're not the the iReady test isn't the only one. But the iReady assessment is one that can be administered and it does like if we want to know where a student, help us to see where a student might be where grade level wise. If Michael gives a seventh grader, a seventh grade assessment, but the student is performing at fifth grade, they're just not gonna. They might not, I mean, we're not gonna get a score maybe relevant to where that student's at. And that's what the iReady helps us with. It's our assessment we use to show growth for our LAPD funding and our our LAPD reports, title reports. As well as the migrant reporting, some of the reporting we have to do.
And and that's the one I was more familiar with. I've heard it for years with Scotty. Him needing to take or taking an iReady test, but the this newer one, the. Interim blocks is is new, so I just want to make sure I'm clear on how we're doing the assessments.
And Scotty, a little bit addition to the iReady assessment is like Michael said, it is adaptive and. And so you'll they'll get some higher questions and some lower questions until they give them a specific grade level. But it's also tied to a personalized instruction, so based on that diagnostic, it it has a. Virtual. Instruction that the students can work through and get intervention interventions based on that specific grade level. Another piece that we've just been introduced or we're going to be introduced PD-wise is there's a standards mastery. Assessment that's tied to iReady, which gets into the specific grade level standards and student. Teachers will be able to assign those as formative assessments to see how kids are doing specifically on grade level standards. The interim blocks, though, are very good assessment. To judge how students are doing specifically on grade level standards. And elementary has used those in the past, not as a reporting purpose, but. To see how kids are are faring with those grade level standards, but they don't go in. They all, the interim blocks are grades three and above. They don't go down to the primary level.
All right, thank you. Brian, are you?
Yep.
Waiting to talk?
Next slide. I I would add my two cents to the previous discussion. And and tag on to what Kevin said that the interim blocks have really been developed. Over the last year or two to include more specificity with what they're what they're scoring, so we no longer have just the summative score. But we can narrow those down and focus those down to particular skills. And that's one of the areas that we like. Kevin referenced the interim blocks only going down to the third grade level. I ready really only has supplemental information or remedial information for our kids up to the eighth grade. And so for our students at the high school that are still working on their reading skills. It is still appropriate to use some of those programs, but the higher grade levels, it no, it's no longer appropriate. And a lot of that is based. Not just on that information, but on the platform itself. The platform is geared toward the elementary and middle school. But even at the middle school level, it's 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 a little bit at the at the low end for the for the middle school as far as the platform goes. So kids get on there and they see these cartoon figures and they disconnect from that and they. The belief is is that they don't put the time or the effort into that as much as they, as much as the elementary kids might. Based solely on the platform, so. There's, there's a couple of different avenues there and and trains of thought that have led to the interim blocks, so. Moving on to the rest of the high school pieces. I I spoke to this one in our last meeting, but I referenced the ninth grade on track to graduate now. It it is a little deceiving. The it the category itself, so this is something that also goes on to our report card. And you can see in two thousand eighteen, we had a sixty four point six on track to graduate. Two thousand nineteen, we we raised that three point two percent. I referenced it, like I said last time. What ninth grade on track to graduate means is the students who did not fail a section. In their freshman year. So if a student, if a freshman student fails any section. They are no longer by the state's definition of on track to graduate. They are no longer on track to graduate. That does not mean that they, now I I'm switching to my language. It does not mean that they won't have the credits to graduate. That just means that according to the state's definition, they have failed a section. Because of our our current grading systems and trimester systems. We have built in opportunity for kids to make up for some failures along the way. So students will still have the credits available, the credits in order to graduate. Again, according to the state, they just are now no longer on track. So anything that is reported in our in our report card is is something obviously that we want to improve upon. Reflects on the school. I pulled the numbers just for the first trimester and we are currently at sixty seven point three percent. On track to graduate for this year. That's not what we wanted, but that's that's on par for our our percentage. That's not what we wanted, but that's that's on par for our percentages. You know, moving, you know, from last year to this year. You can see the goal is to get to 85% by 2025. And we feel like we're we're building that plan in order to do so. Now, this plan was started with the intent of being in a traditional setting. So the action items over on the right hand side, you know, creating the student success coordinator with Casey Blair and the help of Casey Blair in and the help of all of our teachers in the daily advisory. Working to create a system to identify students and categorize students. We have done that. We've created a four, three, two, one system to play students that are struggling at different levels. And then to build into the scope of that position and into the scope of the school day. The helps that these students will need such as we're looking at the possibility of what we're calling a freshman academy. Now, this is a possible future move. Freshman Academy, students that are struggling as eighth graders could potentially get placed in a class and all of this is dependent upon funding and dependent upon teacher numbers and that kind of thing. But to create a freshman academy where students can now take four core classes in and one academy class where we teach them the skills that they will need to be successful at the high school. Not every student may need that class. So we have many successful students at the middle school, but there are some that we can already identify at the middle school level that we think will need a transition into the high school learning environment. And those are the kids that we would focus on putting into a freshman academy type. So as as we look at this information, it's it's an ever change, seems to be an ever changing. You know, position as we build it, but one that I feel and we feel will really help our ninth grade students to avoid that pitfall of failing even one section as they move into the high school. Are there any questions on that one?
Yes. Who's working on the freshman academy idea, Brian?
That is myself, David Funk and Casey Blair, who is the student success coordinator, and we are at the beginning stages of that as well. I've spoken to Deanna as well about that position and what that would entail and what that means for us staffing wise. And making some difficult decisions on what teachers teach and pulling, you know, what funds to use to fill a position like that. We know we can fill at least a couple periods a day with Casey Blair in that student success coordinator role. She is more than willing to teach that class. But that would only offer us a couple of sections, which is better than nothing, but we would like to look at funding. You know, another teacher to to be able to broaden that out and include other students in that as well.
But does this reach? We talked about this last year. This was a concern then too. How are we going to reach those eighth graders that need that support to be ready for high school? So with Brian and David and Casey Howard will be reaching the middle school for their because it seems to be coming from the middle school and being ready for high school as an eighth grader. How are we including what's happening at the middle school in that freshman academy discussion?
Yeah, that is one. When we talk about the vertical alignment, all of these pieces come into play. So Michael and I have been working hard to try and include that vertical piece. And that goes to scheduling, taking counselors down to the middle, over to the middle school to inform them processes and registration processes, choosing classes. We're trying to refine that one as well. But this freshman academy concept is new enough that that hasn't been taken to the middle school yet. You know, we're just trying to, we're toying with the idea and bottom line, we need to be able to fill a position like this first before we can even make it an offering. So we're at the very infant stages of this one. But you're exactly right. It does need to go to the to the eighth grade level. And it's it's one that that I think we, I know we want to take it to the middle school level. As we get closer to informing students of what scheduling opportunities they have.
I would agree because looking at those numbers were but 30% or so not making that freshman on time. Great. So hopefully it'll move that direction. Any questions from the board for Brian on this topic? All right. Thanks, sir. What's next?
I'm going to finish this out here for the for the high school. I've got two more here. This process high school goal dual credit course completion. Now, this one goes directly into the work within our counseling department and our our CTE amongst other, among other things. We have really made a push. I think you guys are aware of the push that we've made to get dual credit courses at the high school. We have dual credit coursework in every department at our school, including new, we're still looking at the the CTE science offerings between human anatomy, physiology and the health science courses. So we're still looking at that, but we have a number of new courses as of last year and we're continuing to push some of those courses to try and get more availability to students in dual credit and give them the dual credit opportunities. But the goal there, you can see as we're progressing and 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 maybe even doing a better job, trying to do a better job of of rolling this out to the community as an awareness piece. In 2018, we had 15.4% of our students taking dual credit. Last year, 30 jumped to 32% of our students taking dual credit. That I would anticipate that that will jump again, given the number of dual credit courses that we are offering now in the high school this year. And with the generosity of our school district and board providing funds to to pay for those courses last year and this year is another huge step to that. And in getting kids to take those courses. But the goal now to get to 2025 is 75% of our students to complete at least one dual credit course and earn college credit by 2025. And they have, they have a lot of opportunity to do so from the time that they're freshmen to begin working on on gaining that college credit. So we're excited about this one. This one is in direct correlation with with Rick Follett and the work that he's doing in CTE and building that program. I feel very, very good about that program and and the work that's going on there. So we're continuing to push this one into into the future and into 21st century, if you will. And offering our students more opportunity.
And in particular, this program, our teachers are doing a great job of promoting it as well. I hear them talking in their classes to our kids about dual credit and that's, that's great. And it gets the kids excited because they know that they can move on to some college classes and have some stuff knocked out at the time they get there. So I really like this program. I'm glad we're doing it. So whoever's involved with it, thank you very much. And especially our teachers that are promoting it. Thank them because it is helping it gets kids engaged and involved. I like it. Any questions from the board for Mr. Bailey on dual credit completion? All right. Thank you. Deanna, is there anything else on the school improvement plans we need to know?
I've got one more, Mr.
Oh, I don't have that one. Mine says questions. All right, go ahead.
Apologize for that. Last one is graduation rate. You know, that's a pretty self explanatory title there. You can see the graduation rate in in 18, 19. You know, 81% up to 84%. I don't know why I didn't have the number there. Anyway, 90% of our students graduating on time as of 2025, that's the goal. Now, the hope is, is that by building all of these programs and building, you know, in the opportunity for for I hate to say the opportunity for failure, but that's really what it is. It's to build that grit through the failure process. And that students can, you know, can get back on track and have opportunities to grow through the process and still graduate on time. And I think that that's what we've done with the trimester system and you know, and our scheduling is to provide kids with the opportunity to, even though they may have had a somewhat unsuccessful freshman year that they can regain those credits and rebuild and refocus and get to graduation. So 90, 90% graduation rate as of 2025. Though it seems like a big jump, it really is something that I feel is very attainable. And especially as we look into the the practices on the right hand side. But building in that the process, starting with freshmen and teaching freshmen early on, the process, the skills that they will need to be successful throughout, I think we're really going to, it's going to pay dividends at the end. And as we get more classes through this, we're going to see a higher graduation rate. And to be able to then expand that, like we said, you know, if we can get an additional personnel and find a way to to include that and expand that to not just freshmen, but to, you know, all the students that that may be struggling, any student that may be struggling. And provide them with a class dedicated to teaching those skills, whether they're a freshman or a senior. And then the daily advisory to give them that that adult interaction and adult, you know, point person that they can go to and speak with if they're struggling. All of these things, I really do feel like we we are moving quickly toward the 90% graduation.
Any questions from the board on graduation rate for Brian? All right. Thank you, sir.
Scotty, I don't have a question. I don't have a question. What I do have is I would like to congratulate him on the dual credit, you know, he doubled, doubled the percentage of the kids taking it and a three and a half percent jump in one year on graduation rate. That's that's pretty solid.
Thank you, Andy. I appreciate that. And really, you know, Scotty said it best. We do have a great group of teachers at the high school and our staff is amazing. They're doing everything they can to help these kids and you know, it's it's fun to watch. It's good to see the relationships that they're building with with kids across the district, all of our teachers at every level. And I I have a student at every building with my five kids. I have one in every building. I can say without a doubt that all of our teachers are bending over backwards for our kids. And it's, it's really commendable and good to see. So thank you.
Yeah, congratulations.
Thank you, Brian. Deanna, can you kind of wrap up anything that we need to know about the school improvement plans? It's on the agenda first to prove later.
It is on the agenda for you to prove later. As you know, the plans are really long, big documents that you've received. If you have any questions or anything about those in the future, our plan is to come back with because a lot of the assessments aren't completed till the end of the year. We'll give you next year, our plan will be to in the fall, we're going to tell you the progress that we made or didn't make on any of these goals and we'll continue that process over the goals for the next five years.
Any questions for Deanna on the school improvement plans before we move on? Awesome. Great work. Thank you very much, Deanna. All right. So that takes us down through our reports. Our next report is the safety and security report. Mr. Thompson.
I'm trying to get it going there. First off, I want to thank Deidre for getting me included in your guys' board packets and I apologize for the length of the report. I hope it didn't crash anybody's computers. Currently, the team is working on seven projects. The first being the emergency response plan and policy that we've completed. The district current does not have a current emergency response plan. We need to get this before the established safety and security committee. So they can review it so that they can make their recommendations to the board for approval and implementation. We've also gone through and created a district wide emergency procedures handbook to replace the seven or eight different versions that are floating out there in the district. That again is needs to go before the safety and security committee to get to you guys at the board. Rapid responder, each one of the security officers has been officially trained from WASPIC on the rapid responder easy alert program. Our recommendation is we need to dive into this program. It's it's free and can be used not only district wide, but if we get Proster PD, the sheriff's office and the fire department onboard as well. We're just basically an application on a smartphone away from dealing with a an emergency quickly. Been working on the cops grant program. Greg and I have been working diligently on this since September. And we are, it is problematic at best. The Department of the Justice has transferred the program from one carrier to another carrier to administer the grants. And they have extreme technical problems with their computer technical issues. I wish I could send Sean over there and straighten him out, but that's probably not going to happen. They assure us that they're not going to reject or cancel the grant on us. Even though we have not been able to officially accept the grant. The superintendent Ellis and I have have worked on a substitute security officer program to augment the security team and taking over the construction security up at the new high school with all the vandalism. We've been working with Sherwinell to reduce the amount of vandalism and thefts over the timeframe. We've, the current security team has worked almost 300 and almost 400 hours up there at the new high school and we haven't had any incidents so far. So obviously that extra security works. The development of this security substitute security team would strictly be just to work construction at this point. And then eventually we could actually use them because they'd be trained and certified just as like we are. Should a regular school security officer have the need to take a day off for illness or training or personal reasons? The safety security meeting committee, we definitely need to get that going. That's my recommendation. We need to get that reactivated, whether that be through Zoom. Probably have to be through Zoom. And then the team has been involved in several different activities. All on top of doing or building security functions. The security officers have been tasked with by their administration to do other types of duties within the confines of their buildings. One of those items is a kind of a student reengagement program. And I want to give the kudos here where they belong heights, the heights management team developed a program to reach out to the struggling students that are not engaging in the distance learning process. So using their model, the security team would like to develop a program to where utilizing these security officers, they could go out with on home visits with counselors or administrators assistant offices, managers or whatever to see if we can get these kids to get involved and reengage. In fact, we we made a contact with three kids today that hadn't been engaged at all and we got them to engage today. So I want to make the kudos to my guys there. Security team training, we've, we've really, really maintained our qualifications and our trainings, training consistently with Proster PD for emergency response. As I said before, all the guys are working the construction security. And that is just, it's it's just additional hours. And then on top of that, every one of our guys has been involved in the meal delivery program on Tuesdays and Thursday mornings since its inception. So guys have been really struggling, working hard. So I'll accept any questions if the board has any.
I, I'd like to start. I don't really have any questions, but you guys weren't hired by accident and the work that you're doing is awesome. Beyond your security function, you've reached out just hearing that you engaged kids today. That is kids today. That is, that's awesome. That that you guys are able to do that. You all have a background that can help reach a kiddo that might just need that little pep talk that you can do a buddy and you guys have all been there. So I appreciate that. The things that you mentioned that you needed the safety and security committee back together for. Whenever you need that done, just let it, let me know, let Matt know and we can make that happen. We can do it on Zoom. Meeting in person is going to be challenging for the board for a little while because we're restricted by the public meetings act. But we can take care of getting stuff approved that you need done. If you tell us what it is, and there's a few on here, I think we could knock out pretty quick for you. The the model that you're using, I'm sorry, meal delivery, that that's awesome. Thank you so much for doing that. And I know that isn't your job. You guys were hired for security, but reaching out and helping those kids and those families and the staff that are trying to get that work done. Thank you so much. All of you are doing a great job. Any questions or comments from the board for Glenn?
Yeah, Mr. Thompson, this is Scott. I kind of wanted to echo Scotty's thoughts there. I think this is exactly what we thought as a board when we came up with the idea. I mean, it's gone above and beyond, but I think these are the hopes that we all had. That that not only would you guys be securing and making sure the kids are safe, but be mentors and and an ear for these kids and also an ear for the administration. When you hear something, we can be proactive and get out in front of something. And I, you guys hear way more than than anybody does. I know just from talking to some of your staff, you guys hear a lot of things that you pass along, whether or not it happens or not.
You'll be loose, Scott.
I think he froze. I think his system froze.
I think so too. Maybe he'll come back to us. Any other comments or questions from the board for Mr. Thompson? All right. I'm sorry we lost you there, Scott. If you get back on, we'll chime you back in there. Glenn, thank you very much for your work. Let Matt know what you need us to do from the board and we'll get that done for you.
No problem. Thanks, sir.
Thanks, sir. All right. Next, your board reports. Let's start at the bottom. Let's start with Jess. Jess, are you there? All right, Andy.
No, I'm good, Scotty.
Okay.
I don't have anything to report. Thank you.
Jester, Scott, are you back? Okay. Well, we'll move on. Let's our student reps, Emma, I think I saw you sign on earlier. Are you there?
I don't know if she's going to be here. She just texted and said she had to, she got called into work again last minute to fill in for her.
I thought I saw her earlier. Maybe that was Jennifer. Go ahead, Kate. You're there.
Yeah. And so I don't really have much to report on. We started trimester two this week, obviously. So that was actually kind of a transition, I think, for students and teachers alike. The the attendance policy change actually was pretty, I don't know, it kind of changed the mindset. I don't, it sounds kind of weird, but it made school feel a little more mandatory in a way. Because attendance in live meetings is so much more important now. And I think that's a little, that's going to be a little difficult for some students who have treated school more like an option and and anyway, but I just, just something I noticed in students. So so this week, we, at the high school, it was Mary Mustang Week, so we tried our best to pull off some kind of holiday spirit activities with the student student body. And involvement is still not what we'd like it to be. But we were able to do some service for some of the citizens, the residents at the senior living homes. So that was really good. And we've developed a really good system of doing pickups and drop up, drop offs at the main office of the high school. And the office staff there has been really, really helpful. So those are becoming really frequent. But yeah, I didn't really have anything else other than the constant adults and peers asking for updates on on hybrid models or returning back to school and just reiterating the importance of getting getting the little ones back to school seems to be a common theme of what I'm hearing. And I think I'd agree with that as well. As a high schooler, I still see the importance of getting the little kids back to school. But but yeah, that that was really all I had for you.
Thank you, Kate. Jennifer, are you with us?
Scotty, she she reached out in the middle of the meeting as was having some technical difficulty. So may not be able to get online and she sends her apologies.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on. Superintendent's report, Mr. Ellis.
Hey, so I just wanted to kind of, you know, to start my report, talk a little bit about our security officers. And, you know, when we, when we first made the decision to hire security officers at each building, there was a discussion about whether we wanted to invest that money in facilities in a single point of entry at different buildings or hire personnel. And I believe that the board made the right decision and I believe that our security officers have really showed their value since they've been hired. They've improved our system immensely and they continue to do so. With this, I also want to talk about our, the city of Prosser recently made a decision to eliminate the school resource officer, the cop on campus that we normally had. And so now we're really reliant upon our security officers to do that work. And so I'm, I'm really thankful that we we got the right people there. I believe that we hired the right people and their leaders, their leaders within their building. So Glenn, we just really appreciate your work as the lead security officer. I have a checklist here about what I want to go over. So the first piece was that I pulled the board and kind of asked the board for some guidance. We had a geotechnical survey at Riverview and they found out that the old Keene Riverview had been demoed and buried. And so they were looking at building a bus loop and a parking lot over the top of it to excavate it is around $200,000. And so after communicating with each of the board members, kind of the overall opinion was that it was that money was better spent on the building versus excavating the parking lot or excavating old Keene River View. And prior to laying the asphalt for the parking lot and the bus loop. And so that was a decision that we passed on to Dan Perfoy of Construction Services Group. Financially, Craig talked about the acreage and we continue to work on that and getting an assessment. We're continuing to work also with Patterson and fulfilling their obligation about contributing to the bond for Prosser High School. They have, they have some ideas about utilizing their PILP funds or their payment in lieu of taxes and working with Prosser School District on giving that money to them once we decide on construction projects. And so we're continuing to work with Monica at Patterson School District on that. With with finances, I brought it up last meeting. I'll bring it up this meeting again. We're going to need to be mindful of our finances. Of course, when we approved this budget, it wasn't really where the board had wanted it and we had to go back to the drawing board or go back to the drafting table and rework that budget. So we're not out of the woods with that. We've absorbed a lot of personnel. And, you know, we've been able to, we've been able to hang on because we've been in virtual learning. So there is a possibility that we will need to hire those people back. So just being mindful of the budget and to try and make early decisions so we can communicate that with with our staff members if we do need to reduce in force. I will now talk about hybrid learning. So today Governor Inslee had a 230 address where he he talked about a number of different things, but he talked about schools returning. And so there was, there was a little bit of a mixed message there. I know that many of you had the opportunity to tune in. He advocated that schools return, but he also gave metrics that were very, very distant from our current situation. So some of the metrics that he was talking about were 50 cases per 100,000 or 350 cases per 100,000. Of course, in Benton County, we're at 700, over 700 cases per 100,000. And so he was talking about schools transitioning into a hybrid model. We're continuing to have those discussions. And we're, we're starting to transition. Of course, we have athletics going. We've had some positive COVID cases there. We do have tutoring services and we're looking at our principals are actually reworking their master schedules. We're looking at an AABB model, which would be students attending school. The A group would attend school Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday would be a deep clean day. And then the B group would attend Thursday, Friday. We had a meeting today with the school nurses as well as food services, transportation, maintenance, the maintenance and custodial department, just about logistics about that. Of course, we have a big PPE order that we place through the ESD that will be coming in, but we're continuing to work on that. Kevin Lusk has done a fantastic job with doing contact tracing and getting getting our kids active. We knew that we were going to encounter cases when when we started that. And that's been true. We have encountered cases and kids have had to isolate or quarantine themselves. We have layers and layers of, you know, kind of mitigating mitigating actions that we're taking from people wearing PPE to contact tracing to attestations and we're continuing to try and refine those. So once our principals rework their master schedules and come up with those, we'll be submitting those to the board so that we can take a look. And then the last piece on that will be our communication out to the parents and to solidify a date and to come back to school. We're still working on MOUs at the principal level, at the teacher level, at the PSC level about what what that looks like for employees. So even though we have a lot of the the big cornerstones put in place, there's still a lot of fine, there's still a lot of fine tuning that has to take place. So any questions on any of that information that that I can help shed some light on?
Any questions from the board for Mr. Ellis? Andy, Peggy, Jess, Scott? All right. Thank you, Matt.
Yeah.
All right. We're going to move on to our consent agenda and a couple of action items. I just want to, I need to see how many board members we have on the call because we've lost some, it sounds like internet went down in town for a little bit and we lost a few folks. Peggy, are you still here?
Yes, I am.
Oh, okay. Andy, are you, okay, you can just leave your mic on. We're going to vote real quick. Andy, you're there. That's you. Jess, are you with us?
Yes, I am here.
Okay. And Scott, are you with us? Sounds like we're missing Scott. So we've got myself, Peggy, Andy and Jess. All right. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. In your packet, and if you've had a chance to review it, just need a motion to approve it, please.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Question by Andy and second by Jess to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. All right, motion passes. Our next item on the agenda is our action item. Our first action item is to the approval of the school improvement plans and the school-wide plans for King Riverview, Prosser Heights Elementary School, Witteman Elementary School, Housen Middle School and Prosser High School. We received a presentation on those tonight and they were included in your board packet to review. Just need a motion to approve the school improvement plans and the school-wide plans for the Prosser School District.
I'll make a motion to approve the school-wide plans and the school improvement plans as presented and they did a great job. Thank you.
I'll second it.
She beat you by a second, Andy. Motion by Peggy and second by Jess to approve the school improvement plans for the Prosser School District. Any discussion?
I didn't get to say my report. Can I? Wait, can I just say that I really appreciated the collaboration on those and seeing the vertical and horizontal work that went into them? I think this, this has been just a huge improvement on like all the principals were saying, their ability to collaborate and it really showed in the reports or in the plans and I appreciate that. So thank you.
Thank you, Jess. Any other discussion on the school improvement plans? Excuse me. Hearing that, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, next is approval of the bargaining agreement for the positions of assistant superintendent. Presented in your board packet were the negotiations for ongoing or for the agreement between the district and the assistant superintendents setting their salaries for 2019 and 2020 at 4%, 2020 and 2021 at 4% and for 2021 and 2022 at 2%. Need a motion to approve those salary positions for the assistant superintendents, please.
I'll approve. I make a motion to approve. Yeah, to approve the salaries.
Motion by Peggy, second please. Any discussion? Thank you, Jess. Hearing no discussion, go ahead and vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
Scotty, I'm back on. Where are we at?
Yes, Scott, we're in the middle of voting on the approval of the bargaining agreement for the assistant superintendents. We have voted and I'm taking the votes for opposed right now.
Opposed.
Okay. So the motion passes. Mr. Coleman votes no. Our third item is the approval of vouchers for accounts payable as presented. It's a construction payment for Fowler Construction, $74,890.32. Need a motion to approve, please.
Move to approve the vouchers.
I'll second it.
Andy and Scott. Motion by Andy and second by Scott to approve vouchers as presented. Any discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Excuse me, any opposed? Motion passes. All right. I think that takes us to the end of our agenda. I don't know if Darlene's here with us, but someone tell us about the Witteman the Witteman Second Harvest Food. Matt, do you have information or Deanna or Craig? I just have a flyer.
No, just that they're continuing to meet the the food needs of our families. So this is an ongoing event and we've been, we've reached out for volunteers and we continue to to try and provide our families with the resources. Kevin, anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, the next one's going to be on January, Tuesday, January 5th at Witteman.
Darlene said they were able to serve all the families that came. They did have about 10 boxes left over. And then also there was some hand cleaning products, some soap products that I guess Dave shared that we can't, we couldn't use, but could be used in home. And they did have about 10 boxes left over. And then also there was some hand cleaning products, some soap products that I guess Dave shared that we can't, we couldn't use, but could be used in homes. And so those were shared as well.
Awesome. Great work. Okay.
And there's
And I saw that it's on our go ahead.
I just wanted to say there's still a great need. We had several families that continued to come through the line, even though the food was all gone at that point throughout the day, checking in at the, at the door, asking us if there was any food left. So I just want to thank Darlene for, you know, organizing all this for the families that are out there. And I know that Second Harvest also is planning on doing it at least once a month. So thank you.
Great.
And I'd like to add on the district website. I'd like to add, Scotty, that I, I have had a couple of the families that live out here in the Witstran area talk to me and tell me how much they appreciate the, that they're being helped and, you know, the, the between the, the school and Second Harvest, it, there's a huge need in the community. So I'm, wanted to pass that along. They really do appreciate what, what is happening for them.
Awesome. Thank you. Craig, if you can be sure to pass on to Darlene, if there's any help that we can do to help support that project, please let, let us know. We, we want to help. The next item is our, thanks, sir. Our next item is just the future meetings. The board's going to have a special meeting on Wednesday, the 23rd at 1 o'clock here on Zoom. Just to approve some vouchers. It's open to the public if you'd like to attend to take about five minutes. And then the next regular board meeting will be held on Wednesday, January 13th here on Zoom at 7 o'clock. And we'll make sure to get the agenda out to the public for that meeting. If there's nothing else, we can adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, Peggy.
Yep.
Andy, it looks like you were saying second. All right. Y'all have a good night. Thank you very much.
All right. Thanks, Scotty. Good night. Thanks. Thanks, Deidre.
No problem.